I'd like to call the meeting to order, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Carrasi, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Ammitz?
Here.
Mrs. Buckley?
Here.
Mr. Christensen?
Here.
Mrs. Cook?
Here.
Mrs. Dobus?
Here.
Mr. Means?
Present.
Mrs. Rule?
Here.
Mr. Spicuzzo?
Present.
Mr. Workmeister?
Here.
Nine members present.
Thank you. I'm going to reread some remarks I made at our last meeting. I would like to take this opportunity to address some of the misinformation that has been recently circulating about the Bethel Park School District with regard to staffing and budget. I'm not here this evening again to change anybody's opinion because we are all entitled to our opinions, but what I am here to do is to provide you with the facts which I hope will help you to develop an informed opinion. Since the 2002-2003 school year, enrollment in the Bethel Park School District has slowly declined from 5,252 students in '02-'03 to 4,163 students to begin the '17-'18 school year. That's almost 1,100 less students than we had 15 years ago. Of the 13,000 households in Bethel Park, 4,000 of them have children while 9,000 of them do not. The two most common age groups in Bethel Park are middle-aged people and retirees. We now have more homes with empty nesters, senior citizens, or couples without children, which is the probable reason for the declining enrollment we have been experiencing over the past 15 years, plus the fact that middle-class families as a whole are having fewer children. Enrollment at the high school has also declined from 1,900 students in 2004 to 1,520 students this year. And even though enrollment has decreased by almost 400 students, we continue to offer a robust course-selection guide with classes applicable to prepare our students for the 21st century. While some classes we offered in the past have changed to meet the changing needs of our students, the overall selections offered have not. Our new teachers' contract enables us, enables all of our high school teachers to now teach more than five periods a day. They can teach a sixth and seventh period and be additionally compensated for doing so. This means that even though we have fewer teachers at the high school, all of the classes are being covered without any cuts to the educational program. When we had the eight-building high school campus, we employed four principals spread out among four of the buildings. Now that we are in one building, we still have four full-time members of the administrative team: two principals, a dean of students, and an attendance officer. While these last two positions were present before, they were halftime positions. We have freed up the teaching schedule of our dean of students and our attendance officer to dedicate themselves full-time to these administrative duties. This was always the plan when we transitioned to the new building. And with the changes to the state's new attendance law, this new administrative alignment will help us to better keep on top of the new requirements regarding attendance and truancy. It is true that the district has reduced the number of teachers over the years, from 405 in June 2003 to 355 in June 2017, which we were able to do through retirements and resignations, not furloughs, and yet maintain a favorable student-to-teacher ratio. In fact, the ratio has slightly improved from 13 to 1 in June 2003 to 12 to 1 in June 2017, which is not only comparable to other area's school districts; in many cases, it is better than what they are offering. We hire educators based on a number of factors, with certification areas being one of those factors. We have every confidence that our educators do whatever is necessary to maintain their certificates per state standards and Act 48 requirements. We hire them because we have confidence in their ability to work with all children within their certified areas and age groups. The number of special education paraeducators the district needs to employ varies every year based on students' individualized education program requirements. Each individual child's plan is looked at, and we as a district meet the needs contained within that plan. Just recently, at our last voting meeting, we increased our parapool. Sometimes it goes down and sometimes up as we adjust those numbers based on individual student needs. In fact, we have some appointments on tonight's agenda. As many of you know, salaries and benefits make up almost 80% of our budget, so it is incumbent upon this board to take into consideration the financial aspects of any decisions that are made. But finances are only one factor, not the sole consideration. All decisions are made with the welfare of our students first and foremost. Some decisions may be termed "out-of-the-box thinking" that require change, and we know that change is sometimes difficult to welcome. Not all decisions are foolproof, and all decisions need to be continuously monitored and evaluated. But it is our responsibility as board members to provide an excellent education for our children and at the same time be physically responsible to our residents. And we should always be open to making decisions that may differ from how we have done things in the past. And while the budget that we passed last May for this school year contained some positions budgeted in it that were not filled due to last-minute retirements and resignations, that does not mean that those positions automatically should be filled. The budget is a fluid instrument to guide our spending, but it is not a hard and fast document that is etched in stone. If that were so, then we would have been, we would not have been able to add the two necessary special education paraprofessional positions that were needed due to a change in student enrollment last month after the budget was passed. These positions were not included in the budget we passed in May. If we only spent exactly for what we budgeted, we would not be doing right by our students. Please know that we remain committed as a board and administration to provide our children with the best teachers and the best education programs that we possibly can. I understand that we will not all agree with one another on every issue, but know that we thoroughly weigh all options before making decisions that impact the future of our school district. We thank the members of the audience for being with us this evening as we provide you with two opportunities to address the board with your thoughts and concerns. Our public comment periods are not meant to be question-and-answer sessions; rather, they are times for you to share your opinions with us. We run our meetings according to Robert's Rules of Order, and we ask that you be respectful of that structure. All individuals have a right to share their thoughts and opinions. All members, including the board, have that right as well. It is incumbent upon me to run the meeting according to Robert's rules, and I ask that you please model respect for each other and operate under that same structure. I would like to ask our attorney now to address our policy regarding public comment.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. The board does have a policy on public participation in board meetings. That policy, as it stands right now, has been in effect since 2007. I did review the policy based on last meeting, people getting up to speak more than once during the different periods of time. And I did review the policy again. I reviewed it at the last meeting, and I do stand by my opinion that the policy does allow each individual to make a statement. You can make one statement during the beginning public comment and one statement during the end. Each one of those statements is limited to two minutes, with the board president having discretion to add time if it's an item that she feels needs additional time. But I do not read the policy to say that individuals can speak multiple times on multiple issues during each period. So if you do decide to speak, you'll be given one opportunity to do so during each period of public comment. So that is how I read it. I think that my reading is consistent with, I've been here for a year, I think, and that is how the board has always operated. It's my understanding that prior to me coming, that's how the board has operated, so I think that just how we have done things is consistent with my reading of the policy. It is not a change. It's not something new. It's not something new that's being adopted for the board to say, "Hey, we're limiting you," but the Sunshine Act does allow school boards to adopt reasonable rules regarding public comment, and the purpose of that is to, and it allows boards to limit time both by individual and by just group of time that you allow individual, allow public comment to go on. And the reason for that is to preserve order. It's not to cut anyone off. Everybody who wants to speak does have the opportunity to do so at each one of the sessions, but that time pursuant to your board policy is limited to two minutes each.
Thank you. And now I would like to ask Dr. Pasquarella to revisit, I guess, his talk at the last meeting regarding scheduling at the high school and HAWK time.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. Last week, I spoke a little bit about the scheduling and what I had heard. At the previous meeting, I was, it was brought to my attention, and I was very, very concerned about the fact that many people were mentioning the fact that their students did not get their core classes, had multiple study halls, and were missing lunch. And so to be a little more brief, but to make sure that everyone who was in attendance tonight had the opportunity to hear, I wanted to make sure that you knew that when I left that evening, I was extremely concerned. First thing I did the next morning was went immediately to the high school and looked at all of the schedules from those who spoke, and either myself or a guidance counselor, checked those over and made phone calls. I was relieved to see that all the students did get their core classes, and as I said last week, I think it's important to understand that we want to make sure that we're not offering a bare-bones Bethel Park, that we're offering a robust curriculum with plenty of opportunities for our students to take what it is they want. However, every student can't have every single thing they want every single day. It just doesn't always fit. That being said, as we went through the scheduling process and we realized there were some opportunities where we needed to add sections, we did add sections, and we would have continued to do that. Also, so that it's clear, there's an "add-drop" period for 10 days. So sometimes in those cases, you might have students deciding over the summer whether or not they want to take these classes that they signed up for in February or whether they've changed. An example I use is maybe somebody was very interested in the sciences, in the medical field, but after an internship with an uncle or somebody at the hospital, they've now decided they're more into something else and they want to change their schedule. It's my belief as the educational leader that we shouldn't hold them to what they decided in February, that we should provide that "add-drop" period. And with that "add-drop" period, it creates changes in the master schedule. There's a lot of contract language which I want to make sure that I follow because that's what we agreed to. And when you have shifts with kids wanting certain classes and not others, you have to open up new sections and close others. There's a lot of limits on the number of teaching periods. They're compensated for that per the contract, but there's also a lot of limits on the number of preps that they could teach. There's also limits on the number of students total that they can have across all of the fifth, five and six periods. So when you look at that, you might say, "How is this all going to work?" And until "add-drop" settles, we don't really know. But I think that's an opportunity we want to continue to provide to the children. We want to continue to offer them and their parents the most robust opportunities that we could possibly offer, and we want to make sure that they have the ability to change their mind for that 10-day "add-drop" period. And that creates some challenges, but I think it's challenges worth facing to allow the students to operate. Some people have recently then said, "Well, maybe we did get all our core classes, but we didn't get AP, for example, and advanced placement versus an honors class." Those are things that we can continue to look at. If you have a scheduling issue, talk to your guidance counselor, talk to the principals. By and large, talk to me. I'll work on trying to do that. I can't guarantee that everyone's going to get every course, but I'll work diligently along with our staff to try to provide the best opportunity we can. Sometimes, as I said last week, I think it's important to note that classes such as our music department, which is second to none, are classes that are equally important to students as maybe an AP class. So a student might say, "I want to take two or three music classes that we offer," and they should take those. And in doing so, it may not fit perfectly in their schedule, and they may have to take a different course for that year to be able to make a complete and total schedule. I do have to say that I was relieved when I looked at the schedules of the students and I spot-checked some others. I did not check every single schedule, so if anyone is having an issue, please see me. Please call your guidance office. Let us look at that. I'm sure most of those were resolved. Going back to my point, I was relieved when I saw that students did get their core classes and that they did get a majority of what they wanted. And if there's still some out there, I would encourage you, I can't speak to your specific schedule here at the mic, but as your educational leader and as superintendent of schools, I'd encourage you to go through the guidance department and the principals, and if that in fact does not work, you can go clear up to central office, including me, and we'll work together. I've met with parents, I've called parents, and I'll continue to address it. I can't promise you that you'll have everything that you want, but I can promise we will work diligently to make sure we offer a solid, excellent schedule that you feel comfortable with, that's preparing your student to go out to whatever it is they choose. So I think that summarizes that in general, and if there are specific questions to your student's schedule, I wouldn't be able to answer those tonight, but I would encourage you to go up through the appropriate chain of command and end with me, and I can look at it. I will at least do my best to work on that because it's important to me. I don't want to see that happen. As far as HAWK time goes, that has come up quite a few times, and maybe at some point here, once we get the testing result, I'll ask some of the administration to present on progress. We're not prepared to do that tonight. The general statement is, HAWK time is a scheduling change in our elementary schedule in which we look at offering students across a grade level differentiated instruction using flexible grouping. And flexible grouping means you're not always in one group. We review these standards and teach these standards in class, right? And then after we teach them, then we look at an assessment to determine which group your child should be in, and that's flexible because maybe somebody is really good at measurement and maybe not so good at something else. So if you are really, if you have mastered that skill, then you'd be in a group where we're offering enrichment. If you're struggling, we'd offer you remediation. And if you're in the middle where you've gained it, well, we still want it to continue to excel and accelerate your students. We want all of our students to grow. We want all of our students to have the opportunity to work and grow, and I think it's an excellent program. I'd like to thank the teaching staff for their ability to be flexible and continue to work. It's a change. It's a challenge, but I think it showed some positives, and I hope that will show in our, not only our testing results, but just in general. It's not all testing, although we do focus sometimes on the standards. Those are things that are assessed by the PSSA, but this goes all the way down. We're working on reading skills, fluency skills, and lots of skills that are out there for our students. So I think it's a really solid program that I'd like to be able to provide you more updates on as we progress. I think that schedule is one that allows for students 45, 40 minutes, excuse me, a day, five days a week to address reading and mathematics skills that they're learning in their classroom and really provide an opportunity to differentiate the instruction to benefit all students. So that's a general update, and I feel it's an excellent program. And again, I'd like to thank the teachers and staff who really make work, go the extra mile.
Thank you. And I'm going to call upon you one more time. We're going to do a presentation.
It is my pleasure to be able to recognize one member of our score board, this school board this evening, excuse me, for making the Pennsylvania School Boards Association's Honorable of School Board Service. Since 1983, PSBA has been recognizing the contributions of dedicated local school directors with long-term service. School directors are first recognized when they reach eight years of service and again every four years thereafter through the Honorable of the School Board Service. The Honorable is PSBA's way of saying thank you to those individuals who exemplify leadership and statesmanship, giving unselfishly of their time and talents for the future of our public schools and putting something back into their local communities through their guidance of the education of our youth. It is my pleasure tonight to recognize Cindy Buckley for her eighth year of service to the board and qualifying for the Honorable for the first time. Thank you for your service, Mrs. Buckley. Please stand up and have a round of applause.
Thank you.
Now, I need an intent to adopt the agenda for business items.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries nine to zero. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the business meeting of August 1st, 2017, and the regular meeting of August 22nd, 2017.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries nine to zero. I need to announce executive sessions held September 19th, 2017, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information, and September 26th, 2017, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information.
Good evening. The school year is a little more than a month old, and I am pleased to share with you many items of good news this evening. Before the school year even began, WPXI-TV visited Lincoln Elementary School to speak with Principal Jay Johnson about the new school year. Besides highlighting the district's commitment to equipping our students with 21st-century skills, Mr. Johnson was able to showcase the new sustainable garden that was planted at Lincoln last school year. Additionally, WPXI morning anchor Joe Arena reported live from Bethel Park High School during the morning news on the first day of school, providing some musical entertainment for the broadcast with the members of the high school drum line who were up bright and early for performances at 5:30 and 6:00 AM that day. Also this summer, Lincoln librarian Denise Pesekanix and Bethel Park Public Librarian Elaine Volby visited every Bethel Park Elementary School for a pop-up library program. Students were able to take home two books thanks to a grant from PBS, and they were also able to make a craft. Several Bethel Park students participated in the extended school year program in July where they had the opportunity to participate in a variety of learning experiences, both inside the classroom and out. The elementary students especially enjoyed visiting Luciano's Pizza to make their own pizzas. For the second consecutive year, William Penn Elementary School served as a host site for Camp Invention, where students in grades K through 6 spent five days participating in engaging, hands-on STEAM activities such as building spy gadget alarm boxes from upside cycled materials, designing duct tape products and pitching them to mock investors, and engineering giant castles. The National Merit Scholarship Corporation has recognized five Bethel Park High School students in its 2018 National Merit Scholarship Program. Senior Grace Evans has been named a semifinalist, and Evan Aaronhal, Elise Bermudez, Emily Clairvet, and Emily Cowsor have been named commended students. They are among the top 50,000 scorers in the country on the PSAT, which they took their junior year. Grace is now eligible to receive one of the 7,500 National Merit Scholarships that will be awarded next spring. Congratulations to all these students for this outstanding recognition. This year, Bethel Park had a record number of advanced placement scholars, 41 students, who scored high enough on the advanced placement exams they took last spring to receive advanced placement, college credit, or both for their efforts. 2017 graduate Rachel McLean was named a National AP Scholar for receiving an average score of at least four on all AP exams taken, with scores of three or higher on five or more exams. Ten students were named AP Scholars with Distinction. Congratulations to Kyle Copeland, Emily Cowsor, Jordan Hare, Elizabeth Jensen, Rachel McLean, Ryan Fab, Jessica Veman, Kevin Yost, Natalie Young, and John Veltem. Ten students were named AP Scholars with Honor. Congratulations to Jeffrey Hoffman, Hannah Hutton, Delaney Lacy, Megan McClary, Adrian Slater, Todd Ackerman, Kayla Armstrong, Evan Aaronhal, Noah Gearhart, and Grayden Tomkowits. Twenty-one students were named AP Scholars. Congratulations to Terouche Ball, James Fleckenstein, Zachary Gorman, Zephyr Grifor, Sarah Kaufman, Jennifer Clara, Jacob Marcovetio, Tyler Smith, Brendan Troesch, Emily Wagner, Heather Walker, Alexandra Zallow, Natalie Ankowits, Jacob Cunningham, Grace Evans, Max McKittrick, Madison Newman, Haley Radcliffe, Jessica Scarlett, Brianna Shannon, and Solomite Soku. Congratulations to all of our AP Scholars for their outstanding work in the classroom. Four Bethel Park High School musicians successfully auditioned and have been selected to play in the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association's Honors Orchestra Concert. Congratulations to Kobe Coleman, William May, Abigail Phillips, and Janelle Wu. The concert will take place on Sunday, November 19th, at Bethel Park High School. The Rotary Club of Bethel Park named Bethel Park High School senior Sabrina Tatalias as its September Rotary Student of the Month. Each month during the school year, the Rotary Club recognizes a Bethel Park High School student for outstanding commitment to school and community service. Sabrina is a leader for several high school activities, including the Principals Advisory Council for Students, National Honor Society, DECA, and the Spanish Club, and she has performed community service for several organizations such as Special Olympics, the Girl Scouts, the Ronald McDonald House, and the Gold Program at IMS. Congratulations, Sabrina. Congratulations to Bethel Park High School freshman Kelly Catellius and Alyssa Vitrier, who both won silver medals at the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America's National Competition in Nashville, Tennessee this summer. Kelly won her award for a project that recycled unusable laptop computer screens and transformed them into light fixtures and artwork for the IMS School Library. Alyssa's project involved creating protein-packed pumpkin waffles. Both of these projects earned gold medals at the state level last year. The students on Team A, 8A, at Independence Middle School are once again teaming up with Keep Pennsylvania Beautiful to perform two anti-litter projects this year. Recently, the students worked to pick up trash around their school, the high school, and the administration building. They will conduct a similar project in the spring. The biggest litter item the students encountered was, you guessed it, cigarette butts. Students on Team Ranger at Neil Armstrong Middle School are continuing their weekly STEAM challenges that they have been working in small groups to plan and construct a series of projects. So far, the students have worked on things such as using popsicle sticks, masking tape, plastic cups, and clothespins to create tall structures that can hold weight. As the school year progresses, the challenges will continue to get more difficult. Thursday, September 21st, was International Peace Day, and the students at Memorial and Washington Elementary Schools commemorated the day by making pinwheels for peace. The students took some of the pinwheels home with them, and the larger pinwheels were put into the ground outside their schools by art teacher Amy Mittner to form a colorful art installation. We hope everybody had a harmoniously peaceful day of peace. The website Nish.com rated the Bethel Park School District #10 in the Pittsburgh Metropolitan Area. The ranking was based on several factors, including test scores, student-to-teacher ratios, and reviews from students and parents. Bethel Park Assistant to the Superintendent Janet O'Rourke had the pleasure of receiving the Distinguished Pathway Partner Award from the Carnegie STEM Excellence Pathway Partners on behalf of the school district. Since the 2015-2016 school year, Bethel Park has been a member of the Carnegie STEM Excellence Pathways Partners sponsored by Chevron Center for STEM Education and Career Awareness and the Carnegie Science Center. Through the district's participation in this program, a team of teachers and administrators were able to meet with teams from other participating schools on a regular basis at the Carnegie Science Center to work collaboratively to improve STEM education in their schools. The district was honored to be one of 10 school districts selected to participate in this program as it continues to seek opportunities to work collaboratively with other school districts and organizations to improve STEM education in all of our schools. Presenting the award to the district was Tony Stith, STEM Professional Development Coordinator at the Carnegie Science Center. The Pennsylvania Department of Education has determined that Bethel Park School District is in compliance with the Individuals with Disabilities Act, better known as IDEA, for fiscal year 2015, which is the most recent year the district was reviewed by PDE. The district was informed by letter on September 1st by Matthew S. Stern, PDE Deputy Secretary, that after a thorough review by PDE staff, the Bethel Park School District meets the requirements and purposes of the IDEA, which is the highest ranking given. In his letter to the district, Mr. Stern writes, "PDE commends Bethel Park for the hard work being done to deliver high-quality programs to students with disabilities. The district commends its staff for their continued commitment to providing a quality educational environment to our special services students." If you enjoy the marching band halftime shows at football games, then you'll want to attend the 50th the 50th Annual Bethel Park Marching Band Festival on Saturday, October 7th, at 7:00 p.m. at Bethel Park Stadium. The festival will feature performances from five high schools, as well as the Bethel Park High School Black Hawk Marching Band. To celebrate the 50th year of the festival, joining our band will be 163 members who will form the alumni band, including 97 musicians, 51 Bethets, and 15 majorettes. The Bethets will also be celebrating their 60th year with one of the founding Bethets coming in from Texas to attend the festival, as well as two other original Bethets. If you've been saying to yourself that you'd like to attend a band festival one of these years, why not celebrate 50 years of the great Bethel Park Marching Band tradition? See you at the Marching Band Festival. And that concludes the first of many good news reports for the 2017-2018 school year.
Thank you. Student Government.
Good evening. Recently, we have elected 111 homeroom representatives to the Student Government's House of Representatives.
Excuse me?
You can bend that up and be a lot more comfortable.
Oh, no. Thank you, thank you. And we have already held the first meeting for that. Along with the 111 representatives, we've already elected nine reps-at-large to go along with that. Last week, as you know, was the Homecoming Spirit Week and the Homecoming Dance, which we got through. Rather, well, yeah. This morning, we also approved a $300 grant to Sabrina Tatalias for a Girl Scout Gold Project. There'll basically be classes on a variety of topics, such as social media safety and nutrition, and it'll be open to Girl Scouts of all age, like I said, similar to the IMS Gold Program. And we are currently planning a Fall Festival for the last week of October. That's all for me, thank you.
Thank you. PTA, PTO Council.
Let this back down. I'm Sarah Hughes, I'm the co-president at Abraham Lincoln. The school year got off to an early start with the Abraham Lincoln PTO Welcome Back Picnic on August 16th, and the kindergarten teddy bear picnic on August 18th. The Lincoln PTO held their first meeting August 24th, and the open house bake sale on August 31st was a huge success. Thank you for all the families that participated. Tonight, actually, if you have time, is a fundraiser at TGI Fridays after this. Good reason to speed along things. Currently, we are collecting school supplies for the hurricane victims. And, okay, so coming up in October, students will be able to shop at the Fall Book Fair the 9th through the 13th, and we have the Lincoln Fall Festival on Friday, the 13th. The fun includes raffles for baskets featuring local businesses, an inflatable obstacle course, and a haunted trail. The main attractions are a raffle for four Disney World admission tickets and a pie-in-the-face booth. We'd like to thank Mr. Johnson, our principal, ahead of time. Also in October, the 18th is a spirit night at La Bella Bean Coffee House, and the 19th a fundraiser at Tracy's Boutique at the Shops at Casti Village. And finally, the Lincoln Shim Garden had a bountiful first year, thanks to Mrs. Dowd's, Mrs. Pesiccanix, Shim, WQED, all the students and the PTO families that volunteered. Lincoln was able to donate over 150 pounds of fresh produce to the Shim food pantry. Ben Franklin Elementary was off to a wonderful start. They kicked off the year with a membership drive, a spiritware sale, and Rita's Spirit Night. Franklin hosted their open house last week and will end the month closing the first box top contest. Preparations are also underway for their Ladies Night Out fundraiser held at the Bethel Park Community Center in November. George Washington Elementary kicked off the school year with the Popsicles on the Playground Event, August 20th. They hosted a very successful bake sale at their open house on September 12th, and brought in almost $700. The first two fundraisers of the school year concluded last week, a Bethel Park Gear Sale and a Pierogies Plus Sale with over 600 dozen pierogies sold. On September 15th, George Washington went gold in support of Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. The first PTO meeting of the year was held September 14th. Their Fall Seris fundraiser will begin on September 29th. The PTO is busy preparing for a family bingo night on August 6th at Washington, and Fall Scholastic Book Fair the week of October 9th. Their first annual Lucky Ladies Bash on October 14th at the Bethel Park Community Center. Memorial Elementary had a great start to the 27-2018 school year. Before school started, there was a fundraiser held at Five Below, August 12th through 20th. The open house was the evening of the 24th, where the PTO held a bake sale where many delicious items were donated. During the second week of school, the PTA brought breakfast for the teachers. Also, that week, the PTA had an ice cream social with Kona Ice and ice cream treats for sale. At the social, the kids could eat ice cream and play with their friends. The PTA was there to answer questions and sign up parents. September is a busy month for Memorial. The first PTA meeting was held on September 11th. There was a spirit night at TGI Fridays, and another one at Rita's Italian Ice. They also sold kid stuff coupons at the first fundraiser. The first student's school store was held. The proceeds from the student's school, from the student's store, benefit the 4th Grade Activities Fund. William Penn Elementary, prior to the first day, William Penn at PTO hosted events to welcome everyone back to school. They had a Welcome Back Picnic at the school, which included an airbrush tattoo artist, Rita's Italian Ice, and a variety of games and activities. Kindergarten students were invited to William Penn's Countdown to Kindergarten event, and the children ate lunch with their parents in the cafeteria, enjoyed playing on the playground, listened to a story in their new classroom read by their teacher, and made a craft to count down the days until kindergarten began. Each kindergarten student was given a William Penn t-shirt, which was purchased by the PTO. They had a successful open house that was well-attended by families, and they'd just completed their membership drive and spiritware sale. They are currently participating in a candle sale fundraiser. Picture Day is scheduled for October 4th, and preparations are underway for their Fall Festival that will be held on October 13th. Neil Armstrong Middle School was having a great start to the school year as well, with a lot of new fundraisers and events. The Back to School Bash was a success. There were sports outside and karaoke inside. Fresh popcorn popped and cotton candy were all consumed. The Nams families just received their orders of spiritware this week, with over 120 families participating. The BP Pop Socket Sale was participated in by over 80 families with great new fundraiser. The Neil families are planning the first-ever Cosmic Bingo next month. An Independence Middle School, PTSO, held a Chick-fil-A night during the Chromebook Pickup Days in early August and made $75. The PTSO holds Popcorn Fridays every other Friday during lunch, and they have been a huge hit. IMS PTSO is seeking families to become members, and all the money goes toward the fun activities for the kids, such as Bold and Gold, 8th Grade Fun Day, and 7th Grade Social. Registration for the IMS Craft Fair being held in November is now open. Forms can be found at I M S P T S O dot org.
Thank you so much. Solicitors' report? Nothing additional. Any committee reports? Mrs. Buckley, did you want to report on Pathfinder?
Yes, thank you, I have two tonight, please. First of all, I'll start with the PTO/PTA Council Meeting, and that was held on September 13th. I represent the board at those meetings, and this was what we call a large group meeting, which, I'll go through quickly, who was there. Dr. Pasquarella, Ms. O'Rourke, Ms. Wells, Mrs. Flota, myself, Detective Dixon, Joe Consulmagnon from Food Service, and all of the principals from the various schools. There was a lot of information shared, and what we're hoping is that the information shared at the PTO/PTA Council is then shared with the individuals at their PTO/PTA meetings that are held. But just to give you some quick things, I won't read you my four pages of notes. But just very quickly, Ms. O'Rourke was discussing the mandated attendance law. Ms. Wells gave some details about the Wonders Program with the letter people and foundations, and the Smart Start Program, beginning the Wonders Program, and that after open house, the K-4 parents will be getting some letters, and some more detail shared with you as far as what's going on with the Language Arts Program. Mrs. Flota, who always has lots of things to share with us, also talked about a lot of different things and information that she was sharing, and also to make you folks aware that the new attendance laws are on every school's website, so if you have any questions about that, there's a wealth of information available to you. Detective Dixon, who is our school resource officer in the schools, and she likes to come for happy visits. She's available for lunches, activities for the children, PTO/PTA meetings, and she's very much in favor of accurate information being shared on social media. And then she and Alyssa Bun, who is the newest employee in the department, were also there and shared their information. Joe Consulmagnon, who is in charge of food service, talked about the sample trays that hopefully you folks saw at open house, and he also gave a detailed handout with pictures and all kind of information in there about the various things that are so served for our children, and addressing allergies and so on. And he too is available for PTO/PTA meetings, special events, and the slushy machine is available at a reasonable price. And then, moving on to that, there was questions and answers, a lot of things discussed on the agenda, and one thing that was brought up, Dr. Pasquarella gave a very in-depth description of hock time, and so that was helpful for the parents. And some questions that were, there's also more information about the block schedule. He reiterated that was said tonight and at our past meeting, if anyone in the district, parent or taxpayer, whomever, has a question, don't wait for the PTO/PTA Council meeting, which takes place once a month. There's different groups involved, as far as how many people attend, and the principals come to some, and the officers come to some, and so on. They have a different schedule that they follow. But not to wait for that meeting to answer your questions. Go up through the chain of command, as we've always done in the past. Start first with your teachers, and then your parent, your principals, and then if, for whatever reason, you have further questions, Dr. Pasquarella is available, and he said that when you hear Dr. P. did this, and Dr. P. did that, to call and ask him some further up information about it. So, very quickly, that was four pages of notes. Thank you.
Did you want to hit on Pathfinder?
Sure, I'll do Pathfinder next. Put pages here. Pathfinder, we meet once a month, and it is the South Central Area Special Schools Committee. And what that means is, because a lot of people don't understand this, we were blessed with Mr. Richard Rhodes, who represented the school district for years at Pathfinder. And then, when he retired, I was asked to take that assignment, and Mrs. Cook is kind enough with all the things that she does for the district, joins me at those meetings because I felt that it was important that we both be there. And we've had some other school districts who come, who also bring their voting person and their alternate. But what that means is that there are five schools in the area, they being Bethel Park, Char Valley, Carlington, Mount Lebanon, and Upper St. Clair, who are, they're the jointure districts. And in essence, your tax dollars and those other four districts pay for the upkeep and the running of the Pathfinder School. There are 28 school districts, and I don't want to list all 28, who send students to the Pathfinder School. And there are, of course, charges incurred with all of that, and that goes through the intermediate unit. So it's the five jointure schools who are responsible for the upkeep, and then the other school districts pay the tuition and so on. And there's also a fee that is charged, a maintenance fee, and being that we are one of the five districts, we do not pay that maintenance fee, because we provide...
In essence, own the building.
We, yes, we are the landlords, it's the easiest way to understand it. So there's a lot of information that was shared at the Pathfinder meeting. Again, I take copious notes. And the principal over at Pathfinder, Mr. Nick Fratto, if you folks don't know him, he's a wonderful, hard-working individual, very upbeat, and very into the many, many programs that Pathfinder School offers. And I would suggest that you go on their website. They do a lot of things for their students, and they do a lot of things in the evening in helping, they have a very hard-working staff there, and we, as a board, have been involved in many of those fundraising activities. And there was a picture online for the students who, the Duck Donuts, the school secretary, Megan Johnson, was able to get some involvement there from Duck Donuts, and they volunteered to have Pathfinder be one of the recipients, and there was $850 donated to the Pathfinder School for their arts program. So that is, again, a quick report of the many things that are going on at Pathfinder School.
Thank you so much for those updates.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Ruhl, did you want to give any updates on your...
Mr. Hook, I'm giving a report on, you often hear me say Still Center, but for those of you who are not familiar or just new to the district, Still Center's real name is STILL, is the Career and Technical Education Center. And the reason we belong to that is years ago, Bethel Park had their own vocational tech, technology training right here. When we had the campus high school, we had one building dedicated to vocational training. It got so expensive to keep up that we joined a consortium of other schools. So there are 12 schools, and we are heavily invested in Still Center. We were one of the original people to join, so we have a lot of money invested in there. I'm president of the board this year, and my role there would be similar to being on this board. I, we do the hiring, we do all the contract negotiations, we look at the curriculum, we visit the schools, so it's like kind of the same role, but only through Still Center. We have 12 schools that belong to that consortium, and we are in the process right now of trying to stand alone. Currently, we have been, had quite a bit of administration by the Allegheny Intermediate Unit, but we are now trying to stand alone, so that's going to be a big step, and it's a very costly step if we don't do it correctly. So that's going to be something to look at ongoing. Also, we are the second-largest sending school. We have the most students attending that school, next to Baldwin, so we have a heavy investment. We also set the tuition for the students of the sending schools, too, so we really keep a very close eye on that. We will get a new solicitor, and because our solicitor was hired by the Allegheny Intermediate Unit, so now we have to break in a new solicitor. So, and the case that came forward, you wonder why we go to those extra meetings, again, because we own, and we have a lot of money invested. We now just had a settlement where, you know, some of our schools are in distress mode, and the state has taken them over, like Duquesne, they happen to belong, and they were sending their students to West Mifflin and East Allegheny, and there was a dispute between the schools as to who was going to pay Still Center for these students going there. So again, we don't want that money to fall, you know, that burden to fall back on us, so we're there to protect our interest. And we did go to court, and PDE did step in, they won't pay any of the bill, but they're going to allot the monies differently. Instead of West Mifflin getting the full tuition, we, Still Center will get half of it sent directly to them, so we will be covered. And that takes care of Still Center, so we protected that effort. With the Allegheny Intermediate Unit, we are one of 13 schools that belongs to that. That's an elective position, you're voted by the 42 school districts to sit on that board. Any school can send a nomination, but we have to get elected from the other schools to sit on that. We also have a heavy investment in there. We, we approve every contract, every hire, there's 61 pages, my, was my last night's agenda. We approve everything that goes on in the Allegheny Intermediate Unit. We approve any of the costs, the prices of the services and products that are extended to schools. In that thing, we've just, we will not be doing fingerprinting anymore. Found out that it was running in a deficit, and they've eliminated that. So the fingerprinting for the clearances will no longer be done by the Allegheny Intermediate Unit. The other thing is that with that school also, they started through a grant, our Sunrise School and Armon Valley, which are schools for special needs, they are going to be running a cafe, and they will be doing as part of their work experience in conjunction with their school, so that's going to be something really interesting to watch, and we're all excited about it. So if anybody comes down to the Allegheny Intermediate Unit, try to go to the cafe and help the students out. The other thing, last night, we had people from time to time come in from the various divisions. Last night, we had Head Start and the Early Childhood people come in, and they ran us through... through exercises on how they teach these young students. And it was really fascinating. They had us all doing what they do in the classroom, so that we get to learn about all the programs that they offer. The other thing that we had last night was, again, we have, and this is public knowledge, we have a $4.3 million deficit that East Allegheny owes us. Four services for their special needs and other services that they purchased from the AIU. It is now in litigation, I mean, and it's public knowledge so much they owe us. We had another school that just came off of the watch list that we have now settled with them. They've paid us over a series of maybe five to seven years. They owe us $3 million. So now we're waiting to see how the 4.3, if that would not get resolved, Pennsylvania's Department of Education does not have any money. So they're not going to come up with the money. If that would not get resolved, that cost would be spread among all the districts that belong and all the schools in Allegheny County, so we want to protect our asset there. We also will have, through them, they, we were notified that the school districts will probably have to start borrowing money because PDE has not funded the education budget. So this is a position we were in last year. Fortunately, our district didn't have to borrow, I mean, they settled and came up with funding before we had to actually go out and borrow money. But, but we only lasted like two months, that's why you have that one fund. We have several school districts that are barely making it, and they are going to have to go out and borrow monies, and they will have to pay the interest back on that money when the state finally funds, funds education. They've borrowed right now for their general fund, but that's it. So that's the position we're in, and that's the kind of information we get through the AIU. And I will be attending as your advocate, going in, in October in Hershey, to vote on educational legislation that affects all the districts in Pennsylvania, and I'll be coming back with that report as to what they voted on and what will be going forward to the legislators.
That's it.
Thank you so much. We will now have public comments on topic number one, agenda items. Does anyone wish to comment on any of the agenda items that are before us this evening?
Hi, Sandy Blackmore, 3540 Valley Drive. I'm just questioning the paid discrepancy on page four between the paraeducators. Some are getting $11.69 and others are getting $13.11. And I was wondering, are you allowed to give us any more information on the four MOUs on page six? So those are my two questions. Thank you.
What did she say? Four? She said five, okay. I thought it was the- Any other comments on agenda items? Where's the 11 and 13? Where's the 11 and 13? I can't find it. We'll, we'll handle that when we move the items.
Okay, seeing none, we'll move into business items. Curriculum committee and Mrs. Buckley.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. There are three items this evening under curriculum. Would anyone like any of those held out? Hearing none, I move under curriculum, number one, the approval of college and high school course website design and development. Two, school-sponsored overnight educational activities, A being Distributive Ed Clubs of America, DECA, State Career Leadership Development Conference in Hershey, PA, from February 21st to the 23rd, 2018. B, Distributive Education Clubs of America, DECA, International Career Development Conference in Atlanta, Georgia, April 20th to the 25th, 2018. And number three, professional development.
Items one through three under curriculum committee have been moved by Mrs. Buckley and seconded by Mr. Spicuzza. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry nine to zero. Personnel committee and Mrs. Ruhl.
We have 15 items under personnel tonight. Are there any, that any would like to have held out?
Number four, number five, and number 15, please.
Four.
Five.
Five. And 15.
Can you say which ones were held out again?
Four.
Or five.
Five.
Four, five, and 15.
Okay, I move item one, approval of extra duty responsibility program. Item two, approval of a leave of absence. Three, acceptance of a resignation. Six, approval of administration tuition reimbursement. Seven, approval of sabbatical leave of absence. Eight, memorandum of understanding with the Bethel Park Federation of Teachers. Nine, memorandum of understanding with the Bethel Park Care Professionals AIDS Educational Support Unit. Ten, memorandum of understanding with the Federation Secretaries of Bethel Park. Eleven, memorandum of understanding with the Bethel Park Federation of Teachers. Twelve, approval of substitute. Thirteen, Act 93 agreement. And fourteen, Act 93 salaries.
Items one, two, three, and six through 14 under personnel have been moved by Mrs. Ruhl and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on any of these items?
Mrs. Cook?
Yes.
When will the information of the memorandum of understanding be made available to the public?
We, we can discuss generally some, I think all of them.
I'm just, I'm just wondering, when will they be ready to be made available to the public after tonight's meeting and the votes?
The MOUs themselves-
Correct.
-are not. They're personnel.
They're, I'm sorry about that. I thought that they would be put available with the contract.
No.
No, my, my fault.
Yes, you can address them.
Did you say you could talk a little bit about them?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So let's, so we have two with the Federation of Teachers. One in general looks at Peazer's retirement, and in general, to, to not give specific employee names out, if you have a certain number of years of service with the district and within the state, when you retire, they will give you $100 to put towards your health care. And if you get a retirement incentive from the district that allows you to have health care, then you would be responsible for turning that $100 in. However, the difference is, the years of service that you have to have at the state level to get that $100 differs. You have to have more years than what we require for you to be able to get the benefits. So in a couple cases, what happened was, folks were paying the $100 to the district, but in reality weren't receiving those, that $100, so the district owes those folks the dollars back, because they only have to turn the $100 in that they received if they received it. So that, basically what it is, there was a catch and an error where if you retire with a certain amount of years in the Bethel Park School District contract, you would get benefits for a certain amount of time. And if you got the $100 from the state, it's your responsibility to turn it in. Well, some folks were not getting that, but they were still paying the $100. But we caught it, and so we need to return that money because they should not have had to pay that, because they weren't receiving it from the state. So that's one. The second one is in regards to transportation of students and, you know, providing nurses, nursing services for those students on the bus. And the general statement on that is, we are going to look at utilizing a contracted service to do that first. But if we aren't able to get a contracted service, then we will utilize our school contracted nurses through our teacher's contract to serve as substitutes, to make sure that no matter what, we do meet the needs of the students. So this settles that issue. The Bethel Park Paraprofessionals Unit, there's an MOU in regards to Kennywood Day. Kennywood Day fell on school, a work day, a work day or a school day. The district will have an opportunity to decide whether or not the employees in that unit would go with pay or without pay, and there's a certain day limit of notification to let them know whether or not they'd have the right to do that or not. So in the future, if it's a Kennywood Day and those employees wanted to leave earlier, this just specifies how many days we would let them, let them know in advance and if they would be paid or not. The last one is with the Federation of Secretaries of Bethel Park, and basically that is just clarifying some, clarifying an issue that says, we have a secretary as a building secretary, and the Federation might have felt that they should be based in one area, and this worked out in agreement where the secretary can be used wherever is necessary with a primary base in one area. So that's probably as much as I could say about that.
Any other personnel questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry nine to zero. Mrs. Ruhl.
Approval of staffing changes.
Can I, can I just say one thing there, Mrs. Ruhl?
We're not getting to five, we're on four right now. Then you can speak when we get to five.
I was just making sure that she wasn't going to say four, five, or six.
No, she's going to do four separate. We're on doing separate. No. Do four separate.
Yes, four separate, right. Approval of staffing changes.
Item number four under personnel has been moved by Mrs. Ruhl and seconded by Mr. Amadis. Any questions or comments on this item?
I'm going to vote no on this one, just because so many people in the audience over the last month and so forth have been talking about nurses and whether we have enough, and I'm just not comfortable completely closing a full-time position and opening up part-time position.
Mrs. Cook, if I can make one statement on that.
Sure.
I'd just like to reiterate this MOU that we, we did, or you're, you did pass, I guess, now it's official, addresses some of this issue and the needs with regards to those folks being asked to go outside. In addition to that, it's very clear that we have a minimum of one nurse scheduled to be in a building at all times, and I think I'm correct in this, Mrs. Sutton, that on some days in some buildings, we have more than one nurse.
And this was due to a resignation, this change.
Correct.
Any other questions or comments on item number four? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries eight to one. Now item five.
Item five, appointment of personnel.
Second.
I think, looking at this, it was brought, it was brought to our attention, and sometimes I think we have two choices here. We could either say per the contract and let us determine. Sometimes what happens in these situations are, we need to determine if somebody is moving or if they're a new hire, and that, that depends what step they might be on. As I understand it, at least from you, Mrs. Sutton, that maybe we thought some folks had worked with us before, but now we are sure that they only are starting for the first time. So the numbers that are reading 13, 11, which is number five and six, should in fact be 11, 69. They have not worked with us before, correct? So they should start step one. So we would have to amend that. And that's all per the contract that you get paid.
Okay, I make a motion to amend it as mentioned.
And that would be number five and six under-
That was five under five.
Five A.
I second that.
All in favor of amending the motion?
All in favor of amending it?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries nine to zero. Now we're back to item five.
Yes, now you're voting on the motion.
Just to clarify.
Yeah, clarify, please.
13, 11 becomes 11, 69.
Correct.
The 13, 11 on numbers five and six becomes 11, 69, correct.
Is that a five to one as well?
No, it's a different rate. Thank.
So you're voting on the motion now as amended, right?
One other thing I'd like to mention on this, you'll see some TBDs, and that's because we have not had success filling those positions. But if we do finally get somebody to fill the position, we'd like to fill them and ask you to retroactively place them. We do have some substitutes in, in the positions, both, in all the positions.
So if, if it's a TBD, why wouldn't it be 11, 69 then?
That's a different position.
It's a health services.
Oh, it's a different, oh, I see.
Different position altogether.
I'm sorry.
And while we're on this, Mr. Crazee, we have one, two, three, four, five paraeducators. Were these positions in the budget that we approved in May? These are five additional.
These are additional, that's a good point. These are additional positions that we do need to meet the needs, and as you had stated earlier in your statements, Mrs. Cook, myself as the superintendent working with Lori Sutton in special services, if the needs are there for the students, we meet the needs. We always have, we always will.
Okay, now we're voting on item five.
As amended.
As amended.
Item five and items as amended.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Please let the record show that I abstained from item 5B due to a conflict. And Mrs. Ruhl, we're up to item 15.
Statement of charges.
Second.
Move it?
What item?
Move it?
Okay, she moved it. Okay, item 15 has been moved by Mrs. Ruhl and seconded by Mr. Amadis. Any questions or comments on this item?
I'm going to abstain from this one.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries eight, zero, with one abstention.
And again, Mr. Spicuzza, no facilities and services tonight, huh? Let me scroll on down then. Okay, we're up to finance committee and Mr. Amadis.
We have nine items this evening under finance committee. Would anybody want any of these held out for discussion? Hearing none, I move all nine items. Number one being the September 2017 salaries and bills. Number two being the July 2017 financial report. Number three being the August 2017 financial report. Number four being the approval of the purchase of 3D printers for Independence Middle School. Number five being the approval of alternate education program services. Number six, item declared unused and necessary, numbers, and unnecessary, excuse me. Number seven, approval of the donation. Number eight, purchase of cafeteria tables for Independence Middle School. And number nine, renewal of the Jordan Tax Service Contract.
Second.
Items one through nine under finance committee have been moved by Mr. Amadis and seconded by Mr. Spicuzza. Any questions or comments on any of these items?
I just want to clarify one point. When I did go to visit IMS to look at that, I, I must have misunderstood Mr. Minch, so I apologize for that. I thought he said one, but actually he said new ones and, and more updated ones. So there actually are more machines than one in that lab, but these are different ones that we currently purchase, and they're supposed to be more up to date and will operate more efficiently and effectively. So I apologize for that miscommunication.
That's good, we're getting more for that price than just one, right?
On, on the subject, I have one question on number four with the printers. Looking at the information that I was given, it does, I have one question as to the printers that we have, there's, there's a forge, flash forge, one that's $400, and that, so- that, so Rolzbolt or whatever the mini, you know, that one is for like twelve hundred dollars. I, I was wondering, and I asked the question, but I think it's best to bring it up here to see what the advantage or disadvantages are. I know that if we can get two of those cheap ones for eight hundred dollars versus one, that would give one extra printer, and, and being that this is educational, it's good to have a variety of printers maybe, instead of all, you know, just six of the same exact ones. But there's probably downsides, like as far as interoperability, or if there's something wrong with one, we'll know how to troubleshoot the other ones. This will be where you have to learn two different printers, but for the kids or whatever, I thought it might be good to have two different printers there.
Well, the familiarity with them all being the same is an advantage.
Right. But that could be a disadvantage too.
And I think when we, we talked about it, you brought an interesting point. Should you try this other one? It is less expensive. I think if I had to recommend something at this point to you would be to get the six to make sure we, we know these ones are the ones that have worked in our, in our library area at IMS that we have developed through the STEAM grant, so they've had some success in the, for the past year or so. So I would recommend getting the same, and then maybe revisiting this and saying, do we want to try to get one or two in addition to these to make sure they don't, they're able to be used and we're able to meet the needs in addition, and then see how they work for the future. Because I believe Mr. Ryer said that, you know, it might last two to three years, so that might be a good test to see if the other one that you're mentioning would work. I just would caution.
Also, maybe the speed of those. Those were the ones that, I'm wondering if the cost difference has to do with like the productivity.
It could, it would be difficult to know, but for the students in that room, I just think you bring up a very good point, but I think this is something that's reoccurring. So that, my recommendation would be to still, and I understand, and I agree with what you're saying, to see how it would work. But my recommendation would be to buy the six and consider maybe next month buying one or two of the other ones and see how they hold up and how they work. Problem is, if we try it that way, we might be right back to there and having to buy new ones, and we might have to troubleshoot, and there's some inconsistency with that. So I think your point is valid, though, I really do. I think that we should explore and try other options to make sure they are the right fit.
Yeah, it's good for showing versatility, because when these kids move on, who knows what printers they're going to get. And I agree with you that we can go ahead with the six and try to entertain that, and in answer to your question about the speed, I don't have it. In front of me, I could try to pull it up, I'll probably mess up on trying to hurry up and get it up, but the fact was that the cheaper one does, it's like a little coarser on the number of microns, you know, for the quality, but for, in middle school, I'm sure we don't need to have it to be real smooth and, you know, or whatever, so it might, it sounded like it's good enough.
I know that when I watch them produce products there.
Yeah, so speed wise, it sounded like it was comparable, but you, you get a little less quality product, but for the price difference, it looked interesting. I'm fine with it.
Yeah, and one of the biggest issue was the time, that it was so slow.
The flash forge is about almost half as fast as the Rolzbolt.
Yeah, but you have two of them, see, you know, you, you.
And I don't think the problem is, I don't think two of them will help. I think the problem is a student only has so much class time to get his project done. So if the printer's not done, he's not going to be.
Yeah, right. Yeah, that's sort of why I was asking, it sounds good.
When it, when it comes to working between printers, I think they all pretty much use the same type of file, so I don't remember what they are. One of them's a .stl file, and, and as long as your printer uses it, you can develop it on any program that uses that type of file and then just download it and prints. So I guess it's not something that would need to be a board vote for, for the, for the other printer, but if it's something you'd like us to purchase and see if they're interested in trying, we could do that. Is it something that you want us to do, I mean, just for the sake of closing the discussion, or something you want to revisit at another time? Really isn't an agenda item, because you're talking about four hundred dollars, and we would be able to probably purchase that out of IMS or the technology budget, so it wouldn't come back before you. But if it's something that you'd like us to buy and try, we could ask to see if they would be willing to do that.
I, I think, I, my opinion would be that we talk to Mr. Ryer about that before we go ahead.
Right.
And just tell you to go ahead and do that.
Okay.
I'm fine with the six, you know.
I'm not saying not to do it, I just would like to get his opinion.
So we'll revisit it. Okay. More Mr. Ryer's. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries nine to zero. Policy Committee and Mr. Means.
There are two items under the Policy Committee. Each of them has three different policies under it. Is there anything anybody would like withheld?
I think we're just doing readings there, so we're not making.
That's right, we don't.
Yeah, just read those.
Okay, so number one is approval of policy, second of three readings, number six nineteen, District Audit, number seven eighteen, service animals in schools, number eight thirty, breach of computer as personal information. The second item is policy revision, second of three readings, number three twenty-four, Personnel Files Administrative Staff, number four twenty-four, Personnel Files Professional Staff, and number five twenty-four, five twenty-four, Professional Files Classified Staff.
Great, and then we have a discussion only item that we had a little bit of discussion on at the last meeting, but now we're going to have a little more.
We did. So this is in and around the attendance, and I'd like to again thank the team, that's where we left off last, last week, really looking into this and asking questions clear up to the state level as to some clarification on cumulative absences as recommended by PSBA. The state, as I said last week, at this given point was not willing to make a stand one way or another on cumulative absences, and basically said it was a local decision, which does happen, which put it back to the board members to have a decision. I had talked with the high school and, high school administration, and out of that came the information that I provided all of you, which indicated that, you know, years passed, originally we had thought that medical excuses didn't, did not, did count, once you hit the fifteen days, you needed a medical excuse, whether you had medical excuses for the previous fifteen or not. Since then, Dr. Jan Stanny has provided me and his staff some additional information that says there were occasion where we did accept medical excuses that didn't count towards the cumulative. So I think that's an important difference. Some of you may have said, we're not going to change the policy based upon, that you didn't think it was going to indicate a change, and now there will be a change. So with this new information provided from the high school, I felt that we should bring that back up and decide whether or not you want to modify the policy. So to review this again, just briefly, and then you can, you can weigh in. If you choose not to change your policy at all right now, what would happen is if you hit fifteen cumulative absences for any reason, whether you had an excuse or not, on the sixteenth absence, you would need a medical excuse. That's how you left it last week, because that was the understanding that how it had always been done. With the new information, it's important to understand that this would be a change. What I mean by that is previously, if you had a medical excuse and you turned that in at the high school, it didn't count towards the fifteen cumulative days. Therefore, if you wanted to change the policy and stick with what we have always done, which is your right, then you would need to modify the policy, and the solicitor would be able to give us this information and help us modify that kind of tonight. I'd like to say that again, because we're moving through school, and again, not to blame anybody, but I really think when these laws and changes came out from PDE, it was my hope that they would weigh in on that, but all, obviously, there is local control which gives you the opportunity to make this decision. So basically, your decision again tonight with, is, is the same as it was, but with additional information provided from the high school, which says in previous years, we did accept medical excuses, and that would not count towards cumulative, meaning that in the example I used last week, if you were out for fifteen straight days and had a medical to start the school year, none of those days would count against your cumulative fifteen. You'd have fifteen parent ones before you got to the sixteenth one. We use the example of if you had fifteen, then even if you had the common cold, you'd have to get a doctor's excuse on the sixteenth. That still would be the case, except for we would not count the medicals prior. So if you had medicals prior, they would not count. It would just be fifteen parent excuses. If you have on the sixteenth, then you would have to have it. I miss anything there, Ms. Wells? So this is new information.
I'm actually reading the, looking at the policy, and I'm not sure that, that any, and Ms. Wells, maybe I'm reading a, a different section, but I'm on page five of eight. Okay, so I just read this as saying that a maximum of fifteen days of cumulative lawful absences verified by parental notification are permitted, are permitted during a school year. Absences beyond fifteen cumulative days shall require an excuse from a state licensed practitioner of the healing arts. So I read that and as not necessarily saying the, the first fifteen days, but during the entire school year, parents can write notes fifteen times. We, we will accept from parents fifteen excuses whenever they come as parental excuses. If they, if the first five are medical excuses, then that falls under, that would be any, that would be beyond fifteen. I, I read it as saying that, now, it, it might be different than what, what has gone out to parents or what's being practiced at the high school, but I read the policy as saying that throughout the year, a maximum of fifteen days are, are allowed to just be excused by parents.
When, when, and if you read it, I'll turn the arrow on, yeah, that'd be great, thank you. Well, and when we look at this, I really try to put myself in the parent's shoes and say, if I was reading that policy, if you get down to the one line, there is one line, and I think it breaks there, and the one line does say after fifteen cumulative, you would need that. Now, if you read those two together, and you're the, I, I mean, you're the attorney, so I will defer to you on that. But if I were a parent, I, if, if you take a break in that paragraph and read the next one, then I think there is a break, and it says after fifteen cumulative, you would need it. So I just want to make sure we're all on the same page, because when I enforce that, I like to be fair and consistent.
It does say all absences beyond fifteen cumulative days shall require an excuse from a state, a state, a, excuse me, a state licensed practitioner of the healing arts. But I, I, I think that the policy as written can be implemented as fifteen cumulative days can be provided with parental notification. Any other beyond fifteen would require a doctor, and it doesn't necessarily have to be the first, second, or third, but we, we can accept fifteen parental verifications.
Okay. And I'm, I'm, I'm good with that if you are. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that's our practice, so again, we don't have to change the policy, even with the new information is what you're saying, and it fits. And I'm, and I'm fine with that, as long as, when I saw that, for lack of a better word, space in between, and then you read that, I could see somebody saying that might contradict. So as long as you feel comfortable with that, that's what we've been doing, I think we're, we're fine then. We could proceed with sending out the letter that we've been holding on through this, and I apologize, we were very proactive, I think, in getting information out all summer and mailings and on the website, but, you know, you really go through these things and you're ask yourself to try to be fair and consistent to everyone and fulfill what PDE is requiring, so that's why we did it. So I just want to make sure we had a public discussion and everyone's on the same page so that when this does get implemented, we know what the policy intended, and we've portrayed that to the parents in a fair and consistent way. So if you view it as that, I'm, I'm more than fine with that.
I do.
Okay, before we're done, I have a, a comment and a question. One is, I think we talked before about if somebody has some sort of an ongoing condition, say they get migraines on a regular basis, and they have a, a doctor's excuse saying they get migraines and they have medication for it, they wouldn't require a medical excuse for each instance of that, as long as they had an established medical condition, correct?
Most of those are, I mean, the solicitor can speak too, but most of those are individualized, so they'll usually give you a length of time on that, it's not forever. It might say for the period of time from these four months or these five months. If it was for the whole year, then it's for the whole year.
Okay.
And it would stand for the whole year, and the parent would say, this is what occurred, and then we would honor that. Is that correct, Ms. Solicitor?
That, that's correct, and I, I think, Mrs., yeah, I think Mrs. Ewer said last week that that was the practice.
Right. The, the second question I have is, aren't there excused absences for other reasons other than, than illness? Somebody takes a trip with the parents out of state or maybe overseas or something like that, aren't, aren't there conditions like that where they can have an excused absence?
There are, there is a definition of what is considered to be a legal absent, a lawful absence in the policy.
Okay.
So as long as it's a lawful absence, and it's within that fifteen day period, then parents can write notes for anything that's considered to be lawful under the policy, and the policy follows what the law says.
Okay.
Right, and I think if the policy follows what the law says, and if we're not changing how we do business, how we've done it in the past, I think. Mr. Spicuzza, will you take other for me this evening?
You obviously saw me sitting forward, didn't you?
Yep, I did.
I was prepared. Under other tonight, we have one item, the Bethel Park Rifle Team Booster Club. The Board of School Directors approves the Administration's recommendation to recognize the Bethel Park High School Rifle Team Booster Club as approved, as an approved boost organization. So I move that item.
Second. Item number one under other has been moved by Mr. Spicuzza and seconded by Mrs. Dobus. Any questions or comments on this item? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That item carries nine to zero. We are now to the point of topic number two, non-agenda or any public comments. Name and address at the microphone. You have two minutes to make your comments to the board.
Hi, Sharon Janasik, forty-three, fourteen, Anna Street. I want to thank you all very much for the open conversations that we've been having lately. We've been able to talk about things in a public forum, and as most of you know, I've been coming here for two years, almost every meeting, and talking about transparency, asking questions about details of things in our agenda and in our budget. I'm glad to see that we have some interest in those. I was very happy to hear some overview of what those MOUs are, talking about the Sunshine Act and the Open Meetings Act. I very much appreciate your willingness to consider hiring contract nurses to do transportation runs, and these are all things that I've been talking about with all of you for two years, and I'm happy that I've been able to get a lot of parents interested in these issues, to bring them here to the meetings so that we can all ask the questions together. It's something that's important to me, and I appreciate that you've all taken the time to share your opinions and give us the information that we're asking for. Thank you. One of the things I want to point out is I'm extremely happy to see pares being hired into our district, and obviously, we don't hire them if we don't need them. However, I've also been coming here for a year saying that we need them. I appreciate that you got them. Thank you. The last thing I want to, well, maybe not the last, we'll make it quick. Gifted education, I've been coming and talking about gifted education for several years. So I really hope that at some point, we can start making progress on that. And it may be your opinion, but no participant may speak more than once on the same topic is not the same sentence as no participant may speak more than once, period. It's just not. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Cook, will you please explain that topic one and topic two?
Topic one is agenda items only. That occurs before our meeting. When I first got on the board, they actually combined everything, because we're legally only required to have one comment, period, by law. It was confusing to me to have everybody in the audience get up and talk about just anything. Prior to then, I had to sit down and work an agenda and, and talk about just agenda items. So we divided it up, and we made topic one, agenda items only, and we hold that comment, period, prior to then are going through the items that you would talk to us about. Then we close out our business meeting and move to topic number two, which are non-agenda items or anything you wish to discuss with the board. Sometimes you can bring up agenda items, again, that's fine, but the, the idea being that there are two separate topics, one being not, agenda items prior to the meeting, prior to the conduction, conducting of the meeting, and then at the close, non-agenda items or anything you wish to talk to the board about. It makes it easier for us to conduct the meeting, and then now we can listen to just open comments. And you're up next.
I'm Gus Oakley, three twenty-nine Allen Dell Drive. I watched last month's meeting on TV. I was appalled at the comments of Mr. Means about Mrs. Dobus. She's for labor, not for students. That could be the dumbest comment that I have ever heard a board member make against another board member. This is a lady who gave thirty-five years of her life teaching students. Her and her husband. Her and her husband have done more for the young people in this community than you and your wife ever have or ever will. I can't believe that you made that comment. I'm only hoping that this community remembers that comment if you ever decide to run again for this board. Personally, I hope you don't. What you should do is apologize to Mrs. Dobis, and as your wife would say, I mean business. Mrs. Cook, you did something at last month's meeting that I've never seen before, adjourn a meeting without a vote. All you really had to do was recess the meeting, call the police, when the police arrived, reopen the meeting, then I could have heard the other six board members that were here that night, their comments, and see if any of them would have condemned Mr. Means's comments. Now to the superintendent, I've been involved with six, you're number seven. The personnel decisions that you made earlier this summer are some of the worst personnel decisions I've ever seen made in this district. You got rid of Dumb and Dumber Law Firm, and you hired the best law firm for school law in the area, but that's not going to help you. You will lose the arbitrations and cost this district and taxpayers a lot of money. The community should keep track of the amount of money that it costs. To end my speech, I watched that meeting on TV, and I can't believe in this age of new technology, that you can't see who is talking, not like the borough building meetings. That's it, but maybe that's the way you want it. Thank you.
I'm okay if there's no camera on me, it's not my good side, but I came tonight to thank the board. A little over six years ago, I was here with, as a representative of the high school PTSo, which I heard no report on tonight, so I don't know if they still even exist. But we had donated some funds that we had raised to assign for the new high school. I am thrilled to see that it is finally in existence, and I know from previous sign building issues that have occurred over, I don't know how many decades in Bethel Park, I know it wasn't an easy project, and thank you for taking our donation and doing the hard part.
Stephanie Silman, fifty-eight-seven Sherwood Road. I wanted to come here to, um, to make a comment about something that Dr. Pascarella said in the meeting last week, where he invited parents to personally reach out to him when there were issues that were taken through the proper channels in the district that had not yet been resolved. I'd like to remind Dr. Pascarella that, two years ago, I stood at this podium, and I introduced myself as the president of a newly formed gifted advocacy organization in the district, and I invited the board and the administration to work with us to improve the gifted service offerings that Bethel had, and I'm still waiting for somebody to accept that invitation. I've had meetings with Dr. Pascarella, I had one in the winter of this past school year. I personally have not heard or seen any changes or improvements or feedback as a result of that meeting. In July, I believe, every school board member received a sixteen-page document from us detailing the shortcomings of our current gifted service offerings in the district. Accompanied with that was a confirmation from the state that we indeed were deficient in many areas of gifted services. The state identified those problems. We identified them for you two years prior to the state coming in and identifying them, and they still exist. So, Dr. P, I'm here, taking you up on your invitation. I'd like to have another chat, I'd love for the board to be involved, and I'd like to see some changes. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Darren McGregor, fourteen oh seven Berryman Avenue. I came here just to listen tonight, but there are a lot of things that I think are glaring that, you know, I want to speak to. One of them is, that you guys were talking about declining enrollment. Why is there decline in enrollment? You talked about why people don't move. Well, people are going to move if their house values go up, I said at the last meeting. All right? People move into districts because of the schools. That drives our house values. Rank ten, that's okay, you know, that's fine. I'd rather be with number one. What are we doing to make it number one? Cutting staff is not a way to make our schools number one. You mentioned, Dr. P, that the cuts were necessary, in fact, the five new PCA hires were a direct result of eliminating those three positions through attrition, or whatever. Well, I find it hard to believe that five PCA salaries needed three teacher cuts. If we have such a robust high school staff, or staff, then why do we have these scheduling issues? Why are people not getting English? There has to be some type of count that you guys do, that says, okay, we have seven hundred kids who signed up for sciences. How many sections are we going to do? Twenty-four kids per section? And then that's how you meet out how many sections there are, right? I'm sure I'm not, I'm speaking, I'm preaching to the choir. Then, the way I figure it is, if you have twenty-four full sections, you create a twenty-fifth, because what's going to happen is, more kids are going to sign up for those classes, kids are going to move in from out of district. That happens in every district. Kids are going to move in this week, next month, the following month, and if we don't have classes to provide them, that's a scheduling issue that happened back in February and March. Okay? One thing or two, is communication. Stephanie just spoke about that. I was reached out to by a friend of a board member, that said, I'm being provided with some misinformation, get ahold of her, and we'll have, we'll have a chat. That was about, almost three weeks ago, that I emailed, and I haven't responded, I haven't got a response yet. I respond to my parents within ten hours. It doesn't matter, if I get the email at ten o'clock, I'm responding at ten o'clock. So, that communication, that transparency needs to be a little bit more pronounced. And last thing I want to talk about is, there was a comment up there that, we receive high honors from Deputy Secretary of Education, Elementary and Secondary Education, Matt Stem, not Stern, Matt Stem, and in my twenty-six years of being a special education teacher, I've never seen that happen. I would love to see that letter. Now, they do send out letters after your corrective actions. When they do the audit, they come in and say, hey, you missed timelines, you have to do corrective action on timelines. And when you finish it, maybe you get a letter saying, hey, hey, thanks, good job, you finished those letters. But the raving remarks there, I've never seen. So if you could provide us with that letter, a dated letter would be even more perfect. That would be great. So, as far as I'm concerned, I'm not sure where that really came from. Thank you.
Then I will ask if there are any board members who would like to make any comments this evening.
Mrs. Cook, um, just, just a reaction to our last speaker, I just pulled up on Zillow, Bethel Park Home Prices and Values, and anybody, I'll give the website if you want to find it yourself, but the median house value in Bethel Park is one hundred and ninety-three thousand, it's gone up six percent over the past year, so if our house values are dropping, I don't know where they're dropping. There's a chart here from two thousand eight to two thousand eighteen, where the home values were probably in the one forty's in two thousand eight, and they're projected to be almost two hundred thousand by two thousand eighteen. So, to me, that doesn't sound like dropping values. So, if there's information that's out there that proves this website incorrect, I'd like to know about it. And it also compares us to other municipalities, like Pleasant Hills, White House, Scott Township, Baldwin Township, Top Park, and we are thirty thousand dollars above their home values at the minimum. So, please, don't be passing rumors about value. You can look at my computer if you like, and I would be happy to show it to you. I didn't make this up, it's right there.
Two thousand eight, two hundred and twenty.
It's just a starting, it's just a starting point.
This is, this is the time for board comments, so the members of the public have had, you had an opportunity to speak. It's not a debate right now. The board members have an opportunity, as Ms. Cook said at the beginning of the meeting, to express their opinions and give their statements. So we would ask the members of the public not to interrupt that or debate with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board comments?
I'd like to make a comment. I think that it's evident that we've had a little bit of a rough start, start to this school year, so much so that the president of the board and the superintendent have had to make some comments and to explain some things. And I just want to say that I appreciate their comments, so that, so that information can get, can get out there. But I think that some of the chaos, some of the questions could have been prevented with a little bit of planning, particularly about, they talked, there was some talking about hop time and block scheduling and so forth. And I also, in addition to commending superintendent and the president of the board about discussing some of those things, I'd like to commend Beth Wells for her elementary newsletter that was sent out yesterday, to help, to help the parents understand some of the changes that are occurring, or that occurred in the elementary school this year. I kind of wish it would have been sent out a month ago, because I think that some of this could have been prevented with planning and change ahead of time. For example, with the high school, if we, if we're not going to have as many sections as we had last year for different courses, if there's going to be a way for students to select courses, but they know ahead of time that they're not going to maybe receive everything they selected, and there's a process by which that occurs, I think that would be something that would happen in the springtime, and we can, and with a little planning, we could tell parents ahead of time, and then, so we're not reacting to what's occurring, but we are proactive about change. Because we all know, and Donna Cook said this earlier tonight, change is difficult. But if we want to grow as a community, change is necessary, inevitable, but for change, true change to occur, it requires commitment, communication, and collaboration. Everyone involved, key players have to be committed and involved in the process. I was a teacher here in the district for, for a lot of years, and I did see a lot of changes. Some of them stayed, and some of them didn't. But the ones that were not, that didn't come through commitment, collaboration, and communication, are the ones that we would talk about as, okay, well, there goes another trolley through Bethel Park. Watch it go, and there's another one coming down the line. But if it's a true change, people have to be on board, parents have to be informed ahead of time. Everyone needs to work together, and you need to get key people to make that change occur. And I, I think that we can learn from this experience, we can learn from mistakes, and change it for the future, so that the same chaos doesn't occur next year. Thank you.
Mrs. Cook, I'd like to say something. I just want to say that I've been disappointed in some of the social media that's been very derogatory about the school district, and that does not help sell houses. I mean, we need to think about that. But I was speaking to three reorders from three different companies on Community Day, because I was curious as to see what our standing was, given what's been happening out there. And they said that if you don't have a bid on your house within eleven days, you need to look at the pricing, that's how fast they go in Bethel. Reenters are going within twenty-four hours. I asked, well, what are the selling factors? They said, it's the schools and the tax base for those schools. I think that says a lot. You know, we're, we're so fortunate, they asked me some of the things about our schools that maybe they could be telling some of their customers. And I said, we're a well-rounded school. We have our special needs, we have the largest population in any of the five surrounding school districts, we take care of them. We have our VOTEC students, we have the second-largest attendance at a VOTEC school. We had, what, almost ten people that got scholarships for the military. We have a large percentage of our traditional students that go on to college. We have our gifted kids. We have a well-rounded school community that we've been able to support in some way. We may not be top of the line, but you are getting the best we can provide, given the tax conditions and all, and the situation we're in with the state with getting little or no funding. I think that says a lot about Bethel Park. We haven't furloughed any teachers, we haven't cut programs, we haven't had to go and borrow huge amount of money to keep our school. We're not in a deficit mode, and we're not on the list to merge, because we are well within the school proportion not to be in a merger. I think that says a lot. And I think when you look at our calendar, you see BP proud, it ought to be BP positive instead of negative. That's what will keep our school going, and that keeps the community working together. I mean, I've been on this board a long time, my husband was involved, my kids have been involved, my daughter has a business here. I'm proud to be in Bethel Park, and I plan to really stay involved in any. I work now with the students, with the businesses, I want to see them get jobs. Right now, I'm working with two businesses that are looking for carpenters. So, the goal is to help our kids be able to survive in the workplace, regardless of what their career is. And I think we're doing as good a job as we can, given what we work with, to help to get them there. I think we should be proud of that.
Thank you. Any other board members who would like to make comments?
Mrs. Cook, if I may, please. I have many thoughts to share tonight, and I respectfully ask that you give me the opportunity to share them calmly. First of all, for those of you who are still in your seats, thank you for staying and listening to what we have to share. We've been deluged with, you don't tell us anything, so here we are at an opportunity to try to share our thoughts, and people are walking out, their choice, they have their reasons, but for those who have stayed tonight, thank you. First of all, for tonight's meeting, I say this every month, and I mean it when I say it, the staff report, the student government, PTO, PTA report, those are examples of teamwork that involve a wealth of participants with a variety of activities that impact our children, and all the people involved in so many ways, so I thank you for all of that. Having said that, I need to digress to two past meetings. At our meeting on August first, there was no opportunity for me to speak, as it was a combined meeting. Now, Mr. Oakley, Dr. Oakley, excuse me, you know all these details, because you were on the board for many years. This means a voting meeting and a committee meeting were held on the same evening. If you take the time to review the agenda for said combined meetings, board comments are not part of the agenda due to the time constraints. Myself, having attended board meetings for the past forty-plus years, yes, I'm that old, both in the audience and the past eight years as a board member, this is not a new procedure. Comments were made on August the first that I had planned to address at the August twenty-second meeting. However, there was no opportunity for all of the school board members to speak, due to the need for us to follow Robert's rules of order, so that with the history being stated, please excuse me if I rehash some old news right now. For those of you who know me well, you know that I truly don't need anyone, me especially, to talk for me when the topic involves children. So when comments were made on August the first about the six to two vote, and I quote, "I found out on August first that saving the dollars to not hire a special education --" "I found out on August 1st that saving the dollars to not hire a special education teacher is far more important than providing Bethel Park students with the best educational opportunities." That statement was not accurate. First of all, I did not have a conversation with the person regarding the comments about my vote. So, for her to make a statement as to why I voted the way I did was totally inaccurate. I want you all to know that I labored over that vote prior to the meeting. I saw reasons for supporting the motion, I saw reasons for not supporting the motion. I researched my thoughts and concerns. Frankly speaking, I had sleepless nights over it. Since the vote, I have also been contacted by professionals, both in the school district and outside of the school district, who support the decision that was made. You see, being a board member is like being a parent. Some decisions we make are not ones that we need to labor over, while some take a huge amount of time and energy, energy to decide. Are you always right with the decisions you make for your children? Both for my own three children at home and the four thousand one hundred and sixty-eight-plus students enrolled in the school district, I am not. However, I spent a lot of time making my decisions using my head, my heart, and my experience as a teacher. Another concern I have is the false and misleading information that is being shared on social media. Some of the comments have been downright nasty. As I have said before, everyone is entitled to their own opinions, but not their own facts. Again, how is this approach of nastiness and smarking at meetings when we're sitting here talking to people improving our community? Some of the chatter, the spin that's out there doesn't even come close to the real facts that is spread as truth. At past meetings and on social media, parents have shared their frustration about the scheduling process at the high school. I respect the fact that people have frustrations, and as you all know, we're, we're trying to work on all those things. One parent made the comment that board members' kids probably never have any issues with the scheduling. With all due respect, I beg to differ with that comment. Because as a parent of three children in the district, I too had gone to the guidance office and sat and waited my turn patiently, hoping to make changes to the schedule to benefit my children. Sometimes it was possible, sometimes it wasn't. But my children's guidance counselors, to the best of their ability, worked collaboratively with us to address the needs of my children. And not to make light of it, but in the interest of time, I will briefly mention that there are a lot of questions and concerns about the block schedule and hoc time at the elementary level. Honestly, many school districts in the area have been using these processes for quite some time. We also have educators in the Bethel Park School District who support these changes. Recently, as I mentioned during my earlier PTO, PTA committee report, Dr. Pascarella shared some very helpful information with the PTO reps and attendants, and hopefully those details have been shared by those individuals at their elementary buildings, PTO meetings, or will be in the near future. You also heard many of those comments tonight. Ms. Wells, our coordinator of curriculum grades K to twelve, recently sent out a newsletter, which was mentioned this evening in a very positive way, to all of the parents explaining some of the details about hoc time and block scheduling that will hopefully address your questions and concerns. I firmly believe that if everyone involved in the decisions we make in our school district, and that includes board members, the superintendent, administration, educators, the entire staff, parents, and every volunteer, if we would all work together in a positive and collaborative manner, our children would benefit greatly. If you take the time to read the many communications sent out by Mrs. Philota on, on, almost a daily basis, and look at all the details in the school calendar and all the many things that are being done and the reports at the beginning of the meeting and so on, they focus on many, many accomplishments, all involved with our school district and a community. I would hope that you would agree that if we are all very fortunate to call Bethel Park our home, is there room for improvement? Certainly. But I go back to my thoughts at the beginning of my lengthy comments, making decisions for the Bethel Park School District is like being a parent, and it's not an easy job. But if we would work together and improve and not tear down, Bethel Park could be and would be a better place. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to make comments this evening?
Mrs. Cook? I would. Yeah. Recently, there've been a number of people, including one of my colleagues, who suggested that the board makes their decisions based solely upon financial concerns without the welfare of the children. It's simply not true. If you'd look at the record over the past several years, we spent five million dollars redoing the HVA system in NAMs and doing internet wiring. We spent four million dollars doing the HVAC system in Washington, including some internet wiring. We recently spent a couple million dollars in Franklin, in Franklin, doing structural, remedying structural problems. Previous to that, we put two additional synthetic turf fields with lighting in them, so our students and children of the community who are involved in recreation programs can use them virtually twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, if they're willing to shovel the snow off of them. We've made numerous improvements to internet service in the buildings, both wired and wireless, and the backbone. We spent over a million dollars in the one-to-one initiative, initiative, the Chromebooks. We recently implemented a new reading program. Almost every meeting, there is some type of student travel that's approved. But yes, we do consider finances. Several times, I've heard one of my colleagues say, well, we should just hire somebody, it's in the budget. If we hire a new teacher, say they're twenty-five years old, we can expect them to work for thirty-five years. The average cost of a teacher is about a hundred thousand dollars a year. That's not a fifty thousand dollar decision, that's a three-and-a-half million dollar decision. So, if we can transfer somebody and fill that need without having to hire somebody, without incurring a three-and-a-half million dollar obligation, you know, we'd be negligent not to do that. So, yeah, we do have the children at heart, but we're also interested in the finances. It's a balancing act.
Anyone down at this end?
Yeah. Just like everybody else to go ahead of me so that I can knock off some things that I don't have to say. All right. First, just for the audience, yeah, thanks for everybody being here and like, it was mentioned for you guys staying even longer, some people left, so. But also, I'd like to make a strong point. I believe everybody here owns property, so believe, believe me, we are concerned about property as well. I mean, but that's not our main goal, being here. So, I have a written speech. I never write a speech, but because of things that transpired at last month's meeting, and it was brought up, and I'm going to cover some of the subjects that actually was brought up here, so let me go on. But before I do, I first want to congratulate all the students that, who have already been showing great achievements. Like, we have this five National Merit scholarships and the forty-one Advanced Placement Scholars, which was not only a record, but the fact is that we have less students. And so, if this is a record this year, that means that's even more impressive, so that's really great for all of them. And also for Ms. Janet Warwick, for her decision to go and do a doctorate, so good luck and best wishes on that. And we're looking forward to seeing you coming back. And I do appreciate hearing from all the citizens here, questions, emails, anything like that. And I do try to answer every email, so if anybody didn't get an email, it may be because it was a personnel issue that I can, cannot answer, or maybe I forgot, you know, I don't know. But feel free to double email me if you don't get a response within a day, unless I'm on vacation or something like that. Also, I understand there's drawbacks and benefits to everybody's decision, and ours as well. We have to weigh it all out. It's a very complicated thing here. We have to be cognizant of what precedence we do set here. I also would like to correct a board member leaving the person's name out, just to try to be polite. But because I was mentioned in the comment, I have to rebut with my comment. I do not understand why it was said that we, the board, which means me, do not have kids first. I still have no idea why that was said, but I can say that, you know, our job as a school board director is to look at the whole picture and to ascertain that all aspects of what makes up a school district is taken into account. Okay? This includes the students, which is the highest priority, the taxpayers and parents, without them, no school, the teachers, the people who mold our kids' future, and all of the administration and support teams which help facilitate it all. It's one big, you know, machine here that we have to work with and make sure it all works properly and is a perfect balance. So, keeping our kids, our schools strong and a tax burden reasonable is critical. And we, we, the teachers and the board superintendent worked hard to help achieve that balance in a lot of votes, in particular, like we had with a teacher's contract that was signed, and it was amicable on both sides. I think everybody, for the most part, is happy about what happened here. So, now, let me regress for a moment here. In the meeting last month, it was brought up why we didn't have a chance to speak. Well, it wasn't the board's problem, it was the, there was, there was one person, maybe two, in the audience that was very rude. And I, we, everybody was asking that person to be quiet, and if you were here, you know exactly what I'm talking about. And so, thank you right now, you're putting up with all of our, you know, talk in a way here, and I know some of it's probably rubbing you the wrong way, maybe, maybe not. But the whole point being is that is politeness, that's Robert's rule. We sit here, listen to whatever you guys say, and I don't think you hear us interrupt or anything like that, so that's the way it should be. So, thank you for listening to my long speech, and it won't be long next time. All right. And this is a school board election year, regretfully, because, like it's been said, and I heard it personally, there's been a lot of rumors around here. I was, at community day, I had a person come up to me and say, well, you guys fired that teacher at NAMs, and that's why. I go, whoa, wait, wait a second, we, that would be suicide. Why would we want to go and get rid of a teacher, especially four weeks before school? That is not what happened, as you know, I, because you guys are educated, you're being here, and a lot of people aren't paying attention to the facts, I guess. But the point being is, there's a whole bunch of things that were said to me, and I'm not even going to go and say all that. There's a lot of lies out there, period, okay? And I don't do social media, so I'm glad, because I probably would see a lot more there. So, probably trying to move along here with some more important things. Let me remind everyone that we hire certified teachers to not only do their jobs and to do their best, but also to be able to greatly help our excellent school district by giving us more flexibility to handle any teaching need that may arise to help the kids. They get trained when needed and research best practices, regulations for whatever it is they do. And we find our teachers are doing this, really. You know, I'd say, I can't say for a hundred percent, because I don't know, there's always probably somebody out there or not, but I feel we have an excellent teaching staff and an excellent school district. On a final note, I want to wish the best for all the students, teachers, faculty, parents, bus drivers, custodians, maintenance, and everyone else that I might have left off for a great new, a great year here. It seems like we're on a good start. And I believe that I have heard that from many people I've talked to, they all support this. And they think that we have really one of the best, if not the best, school district a citizen taxpayer could want, and do truly plan to keep it that way. And I would like to add, too, I think we have an excellent board, and that's what's helping it, you know, go on the right direction as far as I'm concerned. So, thank you, God bless. That's my rant.
Anybody else?
Mrs. Cook, can I just say one other thing? Am I allowed? The, the only thing I want to say is, and somebody made reference to it in the audience tonight, and it had to do with the, the budget. And I know, Buzz, you're not going to like this, but we're pretty close to getting ready to start our new budget. Right? So, I guess my point is, we have sometimes eight, nine, ten, eleven iterations of a budget. And typically, if we have five people that have come to every, or any of the meetings, and that, and that's appalling to me, because we, we talk about all the things that we talked about tonight and the last month and whatnot. Come in here where the money goes and what, how we're trying to make it work. Don't, don't come after the fact and figure out that, hey, I, I would rather you did this. Well, we'd have had your, we'd have had your input upfront, we might have done something differently. But we, this is years now, I'm not talking about one year of budgets, and no one comes. And I'm, that's truly appalling and disappointing to me as a citizen of Bethel Park and as a board member. I would just ask you to please keep continuing to voice your opinion, but come and pay attention to what's going on. And I think you'll understand a lot more about our budget.
If I could just add to that.
Sure.
Mrs. Janice, I actually admitted that we listened tonight. So, the point for bringing that up is not, is, is really more serious, that we have maybe five meetings, four meetings a year with this kind of attendance. So, it, you know, this is how we get the feedback, and especially when you're passionate about something. The last few meetings, even though there's been some, you know, contention, a little bit of frustration, it's those kinds of conflicts that help us understand how important all those issues are to you. And please bring them up. That's how we get the message. And I think in many areas, we have responded. Thank you.
Thank you. I spoke so much in the beginning, I wasn't going to speak at the end. But I, I guess I want to say, the, the reason I made the comparisons and in trying to get some of the facts out there was because of so much misinformation in emails that I received and people coming to the microphone. The comparisons I was making was when I first got on the board to today. Those, that's why I chose those dates that you heard me talk about, because I looked back at the date of when I got, was appointed to the board in '03. When I was appointed to this board, we had a four million dollar deficit. Four million dollar deficit because of one unbudgeted item, okay? A budget made regarding healthcare costs. When I got on the board, you want to talk about tough decisions to be made, we had to cut, we have not had to do that since. We had to cut major positions. We cut the entire IST program. We couldn't afford it. We had no monies to afford it. We cut secretaries in every department. We, we had to do that in order to balance the budget. Besides that, we raised taxes to the tune of two mils. You can no longer do that because of Act One. But we had to do that in order to balance the budget. And when we talk about this, and Mrs. Dobis says she hears us say, like Chicken Little or The Sky Is Falling, but I lived it, and I know how difficult it is when you don't balance education and your finances. We lived it here in Bethel Park. Right now, there is no state budget. As Mrs. Rule said, other districts are in the act of having to borrow money to make their, to pay their bills right now. When you borrow money, you have to pay it back with interest. That's the taxpayer money that then has to be paid back with interest. You don't just get the money for free. Again, we keep our district in a pretty good financial shape that right now, we aren't here, there yet, and we are hopeful that the state will, as they did last year, pass a budget. But again, if you aren't watching the finances, and yes, it may come to one decision, one, one job or another job, you have to watch those finances, you have to balance, it's a balancing act. You have to balance them out, and it's painstaking to do cuts. And that's why this board is committed to, through attrition. And when I gave you those numbers, it's not because people don't want to move to Bethel Park, it's not because we don't have a great school district. They advertise now on signs, I go by for sale signs, and it says, this house is in Bethel Park School District. It was like, wow, they're even advertising where the house is located because of our school district. The numbers are what they are. As I told you, folks, we have empty nesters in this community. We have retirees in this community. We have middle-class families who aren't having more than one or two children. We don't have the population of children. It may turn around. I hope it does turn around eventually. But right now, we have, we're in a steady decline of students in our schools, and we have to be cognizant of that when we make those budgetary decisions.
Anybody else?
Mrs. Cook, one last comment?
Okay, one last comment.
It was implied that we never received a letter regarding our special ed programs, and I have a copy of it up here on my computer, so if anybody wants to see it, they can come up and see it when the meeting's over.
And I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone, thank you.